They move.
I was hoping and praying that it would be canceled like last year's. We didn't have enough business to take care of in June, but I'm told that's likely not going to happen in June's. So I will, in fact, be able to be there. I may be a zombie, but I'll be there. All right, kids, the May 23rd, 2023 City Planning Commission meeting is hereby called to order. Roll call, please.
Davies.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Bane.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Bud.
Here.
Jett.
Here.
Forbes.
Here.
And Whirl.
Here.
The quorum is present.
For those of you that did not know, like I didn't until about three seconds ago, Chance Schilling has resigned from the commission and has moved to Omaha. So we'll apparently, I'm gonna blame Lee since he sat next to you. He didn't last very long, but anyway.
Thanks for taking one for the team.
Appreciate Mr. Schilling's contributions to the group and look forward to the mayor's replacement when he gets around to making that. So for those of you in the audience, there is a current copy of the open's meeting laws posted on the wall back there. If you have any question about what's going on here, you can refer to that. There's also an agenda, I believe, on the back counter if you'd like to look at one of those as well. First, second item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the meeting held on April 25th, 2023. Chance to review those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Davies to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Huh? Michelle? Everybody got your doodads? Get your doodads. There you go. Nice work. All right, the minutes are approved. Okay, first item on, a third item on the agenda, excuse me, I keep trying to call it the first, is a public hearing to discuss and consider action on an amendment to the official city of North Platte zoning map extending the two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction located on southwest side of North Platte along West State Farm Road and South Buffalo Avenue approximately 839 acres. This is a public hearing. The planning commission values your input and wants to hear from you during the public hearing. Anybody wishes, wishing to speak must be first recognized by the chair. I'd ask you to just give, throw your hand up so I can bring you up. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address, please keep your comments brief if you can. Repetitively, repetitive and excessively long testimony may be ended at the discretion of the chair, so let's not do that. And with that, the public hearing is open. Would anybody like to come up and talk to us about this?
Do you want me to read the review comments?
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
He should have all received the copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a map that shows the existing two-mile jurisdiction and then what the proposed new two-mile jurisdiction would look like. Nebraska State Statute Section 16901 allows cities of the first class to extend zoning and building regulation to two miles outside the corporate limits. A two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction may be amended as a result of an annexation. And planning staff does recommend the extension of the two-mile. The two-mile ETJ meets the requirements in Nebraska State Statute and will be a benefit to the city of North Platte's future growth and development. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer those.
All right, I apologize, I'm a little out of sorts this evening. Again, public hearing is open. Anybody want to come talk to us about this? I know there's some questions prior to the meeting. Were you all, did you all get those answered? Not? We'd love to hear from you. Going once. Going twice.
Motion to close the public meeting.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Weber to close the public hearing. Michelle, please. And the public hearing is now closed on this. We'll talk amongst ourselves up here. Any questions for Judy on this? This is largely procedural, is it not?
Yes.
No questions?
I guess, looking at like the proposed motion, just says like, as shown on the attached map, I just, I'm like, can we add some cross streets just to be clear for people? Like, would that be maybe a helpful little, help on the map for people? Buffalo.
You have South Buffalo, Indian Hills on the right.
Right.
Okay.
Right, but I'm just, if this is in State Farm.
Is there any, is there literally anything out there right now, but?
Homestead doesn't go through it.
As far as roads, you're gonna be south of State Farm, west of South Buffalo. I mean, that's about as close as cross streets as you're gonna go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just thought for people looking at the map, I know I was like kind of really studying.
Between Walker and State Farm, that's Homestead right there that's drawn in. Walker and State Farm.
No, that's Buffalo.
No, further down.
Oh, further down? Yeah.
Just the one that doesn't go past State Farm there, that's Homestead, I believe?
Yes.
Just to give her an idea.
Not, I mean, I'm just wondering if even if we can put like?
I would say south.
South Buffalo.
South Buffalo.
Okay.
West of South Buffalo, south of West State Farm. I mean, that's about as good as it's gonna get.
So you're saying, okay.
South of West State Farm Road, west.
South of, west, State Farm Road. Okay.
And south of Buffalo Avenue, I believe it is.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if it helps, but I'll usually go out to Lincoln County GIS when we get these and start kind of narrowing it and, yeah.
That's what I.
But I know what you're saying, yeah.
There is no roads actually through this quadrant.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, sorry, I was just thinking like, if we're, you know, putting this out there for the public, can we just clarify?
Is this by chance Homestead right here, like that would go right on the side of it? I didn't get that.
I think this is Homestead.
Oh, this is Homestead? Okay. Because this is Buffalo. Is Homestead that soon?
Maybe, okay. Judy, can I just ask that we just add those cross streets on this particular map?
I think that's it.
And then recommend that.
It's not marked, so I'm not sure, but I can picture.
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Rather than going, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Motion to add those two cross streets, okay. Okay, so, any other discussion? I guess I don't mean to. You're over it, Pudge, okay, ready? I move to make a recommendation to extend and adopt the city's two-mile ETJ amendment as shown on the map. I, with the addition of noting South Buffalo Bill as well as West State Farm Road on that map.
Motion by Whirl, seconded by Forbes. Any more discussion on this? Not? Michelle? We're waiting on you. I don't know, you're a little remote, dude. Nope, this.
The, the white one.
Duh.
We're glad to have you back. And the motion is approved. We're all a little out of sorts tonight, how about that? Okay, items four and five on the agenda are both public hearings. We're going to take them together. So if you have comments about either item number four or five, we're going to open the public hearing simultaneously, okay? So item number four is file number AM 23-003, discuss and consider action on an amendment to the city of North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain land from agricultural vacant to residential low-density single-family on property located at 6547 East State Farm Road and described as lying in the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, range 29 West of the 6th Primarily in Lincoln County, Nebraska, proposed Lot 1 State Farm subdivision. Item number five, file number Z 23-004, discuss and consider action on an application by train Dana Wasselberger to rezone certain land from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an RL Suburban Dwelling District on property located at 6547 East State Farm Road on property described as lying in the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, range 29 West of the 6th Primarily in Lincoln County, Nebraska, proposed Lot 1 State Farm subdivision. So we're going to have a public hearing on amending the future land use map and rezoning the property. Judy.
Okay. You should have all received a copy of the review comments for both the amendment and the zoning. In order to rezone a property, it's the duty of the planning commission to ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The request for the amendment has been submitted in conjunction with the rezoning and subdivision. The applicants are requesting the amendment to allow the change in zoning to occur and, which then also allows the subdivision to occur. A current copy of the land use plan showing the proposed amendment is attached. Planning staff has no objections to the amendment. The parcel currently shows an existing dwelling site on the southeast portion of the property. On State Farm Road, there are several small dwelling sites towards the west, and it is logical that dwelling sites on less than 10 acres within the two-mile ETJ be zoned as suburban residential. Also, on the second set of review comments for the zoning, planning staff has no objections to the rezoning if the amendment to the comp plan has been approved. The zone change will not be a detriment to the surrounding area.
Okay, and again, to be clear, if item number four is not approved, items five and six will be pulled from the agenda. Everybody clear on that one? Okay, this is a public hearing, same rules and regs as we talked about earlier are applicable. Anybody like to come up and testify on this one? I see the applicant in the office or in the room. Going once. Going twice.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Jett to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? Wait, wait. And the public hearing is closed. Okeydoke, kids, let's focus a little bit here, all of us. Public hearing is closed, so let's deal with item number four on the agenda, which is to change the future land use map, comprehensive plan, basically, okay? Any questions, comments, discussion amongst yourselves on that one?
Are these just home sites?
That piece in the corner that they are looking at doing is a home site. There is agricultural property to the north that extends along the interstate also.
So they just want to rezone the one little home site?
Because they want to subdivide that off. So the only way that they can subdivide that off, well, you could do it two ways. The one way is to change the zoning to allow for a small parcel. The other way is to do a 10-acre lot and leave it as ag. They didn't want to do the 10-acre lot, they just wanted to do the small parcel.
Can't do an administrative sub?
Nope, you have to, since it has to be rezoned and the comp plan be done, then you have to go into a full-blown subdivision.
Any other discussion or questions on item number four?
And the idea is just to leave it as a home site separate from the ag?
That's what they're wanting to do.
A single home site.
Yep, single home site separate from the ag property.
Other questions? If not, I'd take a motion on item number four.
Move to approve file number Z 23-004.
We gotta go back to number four. You skipped ahead. Gotta go to the AM.
Yep, item number four.
Thought that was four, is that four?
AM 23-003.
Okay. I move to approve file number AM 23-003, an amendment to the city of North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map to amend certain land from agricultural vacant to residential low-density single-family located at 6547 East State Farm Road.
Second.
Emily, did you say that?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion by Bane, seconded by Whirl to approve the change to the land use map. Any more discussion on that one? Not? And the future land use map is changed. Now we'll take up item number five, which is file number Z 23-004. This is the rezoning. Any discussion on that? Not?
I move to approve file number Z 23-004 to rezone certain land from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an RL Suburban Dwelling District on property located at 6547 East State Farm Road.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Davies to approve the rezoning. Any more discussion? And the rezoning has been approved. So item number six, file number SU 23-012, discuss and consider action on application by train Dana Wasselberger for State Farm subdivision located at 6547 East State Farm Road on property described as lying in the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, range 29 West of the 6th Primarily in Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
Okay, you should have all received the copy of the review comments, and then I did place around the table a new subdivision. The only thing that is changing is just a little bump out on the small piece of property because they were missing a well that needed to go with the house. So they just changed the dimensions of that property a little bit. Doesn't increase it much, I think it goes to a 2.49 acre lot instead of a 2.45 acre lot, that's the only change. Planning staff has no objections to approval of State Farm subdivision since the amendment and the comp, and the rezoning have been approved. With those approvals, the proposed subdivision needs zoning and subdivision regulations.
Any discussion from the group?
I move to approve file number SU 23-012, preliminary and final approval of State Farm subdivision. Second.
Motion by Whirl, seconded by Jett to approve the subdivision. Any discussion? Not? And subdivision's approved.
These will all go to the city council meeting for June 6th.
Okay. Item number seven, and we're gonna do this again a little bit, looks like here, so items seven, eight, and nine are all regarding the same property. There are public hearings on items number seven and eight. So again, we're gonna open both of them simultaneously, so if you've got any information that you'd like to share on that, we'll do that at the same time. So let me read these both in. Item number seven, file number AM 23-004, discuss and consider action on an amendment to the city of North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain land from agricultural vacant to residential low-density single-family on property located on West State Farm Road and described as lying in the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township 13, range 31 West of the 6th Primarily in Lincoln County, Nebraska, proposed Rolling Hill subdivision. And then item number eight is also a public hearing on file number Z 23-005, discuss and consider action on an application by John Betcher, Alura LLP, to rezone certain land from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an R3 Suburban Dwelling District on property located on West State Farm Road and described as lying in the northeast corner of Section 24 Township 13 North, range 31 West of the 6th Primarily in Lincoln County, Nebraska, proposed Rolling Prairie subdivision. That name has been changed?
Yeah, they're requesting to change that name.
Okay.
So we will talk about that with the subdivision.
Okay. Judy, go ahead.
Again, you should have received a copy of the review comments for the amendment and for the zone change. Again, in order to rezone the property, the duty of the planning commission is to ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The request for the amendment has been submitted in conjunction with both the rezoning and the subdivision. The applicants are requesting the amendment to allow the change in zoning and the subdivision to occur. You should have a copy of the current land use plan attached to the amendment and then also a current zoning rate, zoning map attached to the zoning information. Planning staff has no objections to the amendment. Future development of the city of North Platte is trending toward the south and west of the corporate limits, allowing for suburban housing development on the fringe of the city provides the community with different types of housing development opportunities such as larger acreage residential. Planning staff has no objections to the rezoning if the amendment to the comprehensive plan is approved. The proximity of the property does make the area reasonable for future housing development. Surrounding the property is currently a mixture of residential dwelling sites, agricultural properties, and commercial agricultural properties. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to help, and the applicant is here also.
Okeydoke. Again, items, we're gonna take up the public hearing on items seven and eight simultaneously. If this group does not pass item number seven, we will pull eight and nine from the agenda. Everybody clear on that? All right, everybody remember the rules, you need me to read them again? Okay, public hearing is open, and if you'd like to come up and visit with us, just throw your hand up. Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Richard Reimer, R-E-I-M-E-R, and 4980 West State Farm Road. I don't hear real good, so maybe I'm not talking about the same thing you are, but on the zoning, from agricultural to residential, by the public notice, it was given that it would be the northeast, in the northeast quarter of that section. I'm in the east half of the northwest. Does that stop at the fence line, or am I included in that? Am I not gonna be agricultural anymore?
You will remain agricultural. The only rezoning that is occurring is on this property, so the property that is owned by Alura.
Okay, right, thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Come on up.
Hello, John Betcher, 4801 South Range Road. I also live in Michigan part-time, come back and forth, this is my hometown. Over the last couple of years, seen that there's a lot of new businesses coming to town, and brother and I and family have seen that we could maybe work to benefit the community and ourselves and local businesses and building some houses and making some lots available for homeowners to put houses up. So that's kind of why we are bought the land and dividing it up, and if anybody has any questions about what we're trying to do, the name is, I think Bonnie or Tommy have just scratched something in there, the name is intended to be Legends. We're just gonna tie it in, yep, there you go, right in front of you. The roads should be all tied with, with the Huskers. It'll be Frazier Way, Berenger Way, I mean, Frazier Lane, Berenger Lane, connected by Osborne Way. So it'll be kind of have a Nebraska tie-in, because that's kind of part of our heritage and part of our culture and part of where we're Sabaskans, so wanna have it be a place that people can go out there and when somebody says Legends, they know where it is, kind of like Hillcrest and Indian Hills, and we just kind of need a new place like that, and we haven't had one in a while, so that's kind of why we're doing it and love to help build and strengthen the community. So if you have, anybody has any questions, I can absolutely answer some from my end.
Questions from Mr. Betcher at this time?
All righty.
Thank you. Anybody else like to testify on these two items?
I don't know that I want to testify this early.
Well, by golly, that's what you're doing.
Well, I'm up here anyhow, yeah, and I don't like it, but.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Shelley Greeley, 4268 West State Farm.
Yep.
Is there any way to get more details on like how many hundreds of houses are gonna get shoved in there and that kind of stuff?
Sure.
You got it?
Yep.
Judy's coming to you, how about that?
Okay.
That was that one. Looks like a few of these are.
These are.
For those of you at home, Judy's in the office, or in the office, in the gallery for whatever reason.
This is your office, David.
At least for the next little bit, it is. Yep, go ahead.
So, one of the neighbors, I don't know, I think has talked to you, I thought they were gonna be here, but they're not. Are they, what are we doing with State Farm? Is it?
Okay, so, State Farm Road is paved up until about a half a mile from where this is.
Yeah, which is right where I'm at, yeah.
So there has been some conversation, and the applicant may need to come up and explain further, but there has been some conversation between Jason Schultz with the County Department of Roads and the applicant of the possibility of maybe paving that portion, doing a cost share of some sort to do that, because it's hard to maintain that gravel road coming off of a paved road. These roads in the development will be paved.
Okay, well, so who?
That answered your question.
Well, kinda, so who's the cost share? The poor sucker that lives along there?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
The developer.
Because we would just assume frankly not have it, I mean, I understand the maintenance thing, but that's like a freaking freeway on the paved portion, and you can hear them semis hitting their air brakes a half mile before they hit the dirt. The dirt's the only thing that kind of slows people down by there.
And it may come out that they'll end up leaving it, you know, gravel, but it makes more sense for it to be paved up to where the other paved roads are.
Okay. Well, if we have any say, we just assume they didn't, because like I said, people haul.
I will pass the message on to Jason.
Thank you. Anybody else like?
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, 502 South Dewey. Just getting to go on record, the Chamber of Development loves to see any kind of housing. It's the number one critical issue facing our community, and definitely an acreage-type subdivision is something we hear very frequently from people trying to locate to North Platte. They want to see something like this. I congratulate the developers and thank them for bringing this forward, and it's very much needed.
Thank you, Gary. Any other folks wanting to come up and visit with us? Going once. Going twice.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Let me give it to Davies. A motion by Bane, seconded by Davies to close the public hearings. Any discussion on that? Michelle?
Judy, can, I need to abstain from voting on this project. Can I vote on this, or?
Judy, can, I need to abstain from voting on this project. Can I vote on this, or?
Yeah, this is just to close the public.
They can close on the public hearing. All right, the public hearings are now closed. Somebody take it you guys are involved in this? A little, you need to abstain?
Yes, I need to abstain, yeah.
All right, so let's deal with item number seven, which is the amendment to the, uh, land use map. Any discussion on that at this point from this group? We're, we're now discussing amongst ourselves. And again, item seven must pass if we were gonna take up item number eight and item number nine. No discussion, I think there's a proposed motion there.
I move to approve file number AM two-three dash zero-zero-four, an amendment to the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map to amend certain land from agricultural vacant to residential low-density single-family located on West State Farm Road.
Second.
Motion by Jett, seconded by Davies, to approve the change to the, uh, comprehensive plan. Any more discussion on that? Not, Michelle, please? S- the, uh, motion passes seven to nothing with Matthews abstaining. Okay, that means we'll take up item number eight, which is the, uh, change to the zoning. Any discussion on that?
I move to approve file number Z two-three dash zero-zero-five to rezone certain land from an A-one transitional agricultural district to an RL suburban dwelling district on property located on West State Farm Road.
Second.
Motion by Davies, seconded by Whirl, to approve the zoning amendment. Any more discussion on that? Not, let's vote. Again, the motion passes seven to nothing with Matthews abstaining. So that means we can take up item number nine, discuss and consider action on an application by John Betcher, Alura LLP, for Rolling Prairie subdivision located on West State Farm Road and described as lying in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-four Township thirteen north, range thirty-one west of the sixth primary in Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
Okay, and again, you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Um, I did send around, placed around your desk, a couple of changes with the subdivision. Um, the applicant did request a name change for both the, um, subdivision itself and the roads that were labeled in the material that you received. Um, no other changes are on there. I did wanna point out one thing on the subdivision that came up as a question. Um, there are some drainage structures that are kind of dams out there. And you'll note under note number four, um, it does talk about the structures and the drainway that has to stay in place, or if it is modified, it has to be approved by, um, the National Resource District because there is some drainage out there. But, um, as far as the name change goes, that doesn't really change anything else, it's just the name of the subdivision. So when you do a proposed motion, um, if you want to approve it, instead of approval of Rolling Prairie, if you can change it to Legends subdivision, that would be awesome.
And Bill, no problem changing that on the fly? Okay, all right. Any questions on item number nine? If not, there's a proposed motion, and you'll just have to change the, the name.
I move to approve file number SU twenty-three dash zero-one-three, preliminary and final approval of Legends subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Bain, seconded by Davies, to approve the subdivision. Any other discussion on this one? Not? He's making notes. And again, the item passes seven to nothing, Matthews abstaining.
And these items will be on the city council agenda for June sixth.
Best of luck to you. Uh, item number ten, old business, any old business to discuss?
Got nothing.
How about item number eleven, new business?
Um, I don't really have anything as new business. I did want to let you know and invite you if you want to show up. The, um, Lincoln County Planning Commission is going through some, um, discussions on some regulations for crypto mining and wind generation and solar. And someone from Dawson is going to come out and do a little presentation on June thirteenth, so if you guys wanna come to the meeting, you're more than welcome to, um, show up and, and see a little demonstration on electrical everything. So, just wanted to invite you.
What time is that?
Five-thirty.
June thirteenth?
On the thirteenth, yep. Um, I can send you anywhere.
You not get enough emails the way it is?
I just wanted to invite you because they did ask, um, just to get some more information on some of those things that we don't all know everything about.
If anybody of you can go, um, that'd be great, I'll be a little tied up at that point, so.
Why?
I will not be there. Uh, anything else under new business? If not, the meeting is adjourned.